Lord, we thank you for our community as we're approaching the Thanksgiving season. Lord, we've got so much to be thankful for in this country, Lord, in this county. And thankful for Commissioner Jordan, Lord, and you touching his body for him to be able to come back and serve the citizens of his district. Lord, we ask that you give us clarity this evening, Lord. Help us to maintain our focus on the issues at hand and that we represent our citizens to the best of our ability and are their voice, Lord, in our position. We ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. I am individual. Hey, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Shorino. One, he present.
Thank you. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do you have a motion? Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed those minutes and I make a motion that we approve.
And a second from Commissioner Farley. Did anyone have any additions or corrections? If they are being none, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we have a time for public comments. And we have six people that wish to speak tonight. And we will remind each of you, when you come forward and give us your name and address, you are limited to three minutes and we have a little timer up here that will alert you appropriately. So first, we'd like to call on Laura Beth Payne.
Thank you for your time. My name is Laura Beth Payne and I am the co-chair of Read to Succeed's program this year called One Book, which is the community reading program started for adults and children by Read to Succeed a couple of years ago. You might be familiar with Read to Succeed. We do programs in schools, we do programs for children as well as high school students. And the One Book program has been going each year and was begun as a means of beginning conversations, engaging people in reading, and promoting the love of literacy in our community. I'm here tonight to bring attention to this year's One Book Community Read program and our choice this year, which was The Hunger Games by Suzanne Collins. Some of you may have read this. You especially may be familiar with the book if you have a teenager in your life. It's been a blockbuster hit in the young adult market, but many adults are finding it quite a page turner as well. The book is set in a bleak future in which an oppressive government and reality TV have combined for a deadly spin that leads two principal characters, two young people, to fight for their very lives and humanity. Despite being futuristic, this book addresses very relevant issues of hunger, poverty, injustice, civic issues, and relationships with family, parents, and within our culture, just to name a few issues. And that's quite loud. One of our partners with the One Book program is this year is Greenhouse Ministries, which serves the underprivileged in our communities. So we're excited to partner with them. Also, United Way has come on as a partner to promote reading, especially this book, as a chance to engage adults and children in meaningful dialogue in our community. The Hunger Games has been a New York Times Bestseller list for over two years. Even writer Stephen King says that he couldn't stop reading it. So we're really excited about this choice this year. I'm here to promote, to provide a copy of the book to the commission for one of you all to read and then to make a few comments in it and then to pass it on as a part of encouraging literacy in our community. Read to Succeed promotes literacy as a meaningful and necessary discipline in our lives. And thank you all for your support of Read to Succeed in the past. So thank you for your time and who wants a great read?
Who's going to volunteer? Tiffany Phillips.
All right, thank you.
Right, thank you Tiffany. Thank you Laura for the good work that you're doing at the Read to Succeed. And a few of us were there at the last spelling bee. That was fun. So we're recruiting a few more talented spellers, aren't we Mayor Mosley? (laughter) We want somebody to step up next time. Okay, there you go. Now next, we have Ivy Brown.
I live at 1554 James Gafford Drive in Laverne. Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak to you about an issue that is extremely important to me as a parent who has three children who are currently enrolled in Rutherford County schools. The issue I'm talking about is that of redrawing the school board districts. I have looked at the current map of the school board districts and am perplexed as to how these districts make any sense at all. Rural areas are thrown together with urban areas and one district is completely split in two by another district that runs between them. We're very lucky in Rutherford County to have some of the finest schools in the state. This is in no small part due to the excellent representation of the members of our school board. I have no qualms whatsoever with the job they have been doing. Rather, I believe that redrawing the zones so they are laid out in a more logical manner could only help them to do a better job. More cohesive zones will help them to do their job more effectively. As the leaders and decision makers of this county, I believe it is your responsibility to strive for perfection. If you can look at that map and honestly say you've achieved perfection, then by all means, don't revisit the issue. But I firmly believe it is crystal clear that this map is not perfect and can be revised to serve all people in our county even better. I urge you this evening to ask that the redistricting committee reconvene to study the redrawing of the school board districts. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Next would be Tom Brooker.
Mayor, Commissioner, Tom Brooker, Alderman, City of Laverne. Commissioners, last Monday night, I attended your steering committee meeting and I have to say I came away very disappointed. Disappointed not only in the six to one vote, but in some of the actions of some of the members. Truly, I feel that they were adamant in their, and dug in in their support for this current map, which again was drawn up 20 years ago. And right now, we have grown, as we all know, in Rutherford County and we have projected more growth. Also, we had two mayors from opposite ends of the county that said this current map that we're using may, may not provide them equal and fair representation. I feel that that committee basically just neglected anything there. I guess the second thing that really bothered me most is when I got into the minutes of the current, or the recent redistricting committee and I noticed that there wasn't even a mention of redistricting our schools, our roads. It was all about your commissions. And I respect that, but at the same time, I come to each of you and say, we've grown and we will be growing and we have to do what's right for our kids. This current map does not provide equal and fair representation across the board. We didn't ask you to push through any map. We just asked that you please reconsider. The way it's set up right now, Laverne has one school board member that is the top corner of our, of Laverne and stretched all the way to the south, to the south central bottom of Rutherford County. Three cities, Laverne, Smyrna, and Eagleville. And I ask you, how can he fairly, as great of a, as a school board member as he is, how can he truly represent all three of the growing cities there? Different needs, with the limited resources, he is going to fight just among himself. I'm asking you to consider that. It makes no sense. I believe his, his actual district is 186 square miles, again encompassing all sorts of different cities. I ask you to take that into consideration. I want to say another thing here, I keep hearing, this is not a Laverne issue. This affects everyone in this room, whether you have kids, whether you do not. Decisions that are being made on the school board will affect property values and will affect different things that will affect everyone across the board. Again, please take that into consideration. Please don't be dug in. All we're asking is if the current map is not, if it works after revisiting it, then let's stay with it. But again, we're talking 25 years ago. We all know, remember Murfreesboro 25 years ago, Smyrna 25 years ago. And remember, I know where Laverne was 25 years ago. We've changed. And we can say it for every city in Rutherford County. I think we truly need to strive for what's best for Rutherford County and I ask you to please consider revisiting this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jason Cole.
My name is Jason Cole. I live at 7115 Beard Court in Laverne. I'm a Rutherford County resident. I'm a father. After watching the recent steering committee meeting and several newspaper articles from the D and J and Murfreesboro Post, I started looking into the school board zoning and it just, it didn't look right to me. I even took it to work to other people who I work with who live in the county. Nobody could make sense of the map. I've contacted just about every commissioner up here and no one's made it make sense. No one's explained it in a way that can. And so I'm up here to ask for a more logical approach. I know the steering committee decided in a six point vote to continue not to discuss the issue of making it a better plan. That's how I saw that. I saw comments, got to one point where basically a member shut down the whole conversation. On behalf of all the children this affects, all the parents, please, let's revisit the issue. Let's discuss it because unless we have perfection, which I don't see that currently, we shouldn't move forward with it. This is 10 years. 10 years. That's a big time. It's a long time. Based off, as Alderman Brooker had said, 20-year-old maps. I talked to one commissioner who said, we've done this the same way for 17 years. Times change. We're not that county anymore. We've moved forward. Should children not have the benefit of having a school board representative from their district that can focus on their issues? Every city, every area has different issues. They can be grouped together more logically. And that's what we're asking is just to look at it. There's no, as far as I know, proposed maps. Let's go back and revisit it. Could there be corrections? Sure. But let's go back and look at it at least. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Carolyn Hickerson.
I live at 605 Knollwood in Laverne, Tennessee. Evening Mayor Burgess and Rutherford County Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Carolyn Hickerson and I represent the concerned citizens of Laverne. I wish to address the community concerns and share my feelings regarding current school board boundaries and this important issue. Last week, I watched the steering committee meeting with great interest and the brief discussion concerning the school board boundaries. I was appalled with the unprofessional attitude the men took with Mayor Mosley, Commissioner Phillips, and Commissioner Stevens. I was struck by the dismissal of this important issue, especially when one of the members noted, the map is 20 years old. How is it possible that an educated committee could get stuck in their thinking and give only minimal attention to such an important issue affecting an entire county? I'm not suggesting the school board members aren't doing an excellent job. I'm not suggesting this is a Laverne issue or that Laverne is underrepresented. I am plainly stating that this 20-year-old map does not represent the growth and diversity of the county schools. Currently, you have rural schools at one end of the county with growing metropolitan schools at the other end, all lumped together in school board districts. Not easy is the job before them to represent such diverse schools with obvious different needs. After viewing the meeting, I went to Mayor Burgess's office to obtain all the maps, the 20-year-old map and the proposed new maps. What I found after careful study was the difference between being stuck in the past and a fresh perspective addressing the growth of a county. The reason I chose to leave my living room this evening is to ask you, each of you, to be brave, be bold, and be forward-thinking and put aside political wrangling for the sake of all Rutherford County children now and in the future generations. Decide today to stay stuck in the past or open the windows and embrace the winds of change. Ladies and gentlemen, this is your opportunity to write history. What will you choose? Please know that all Rutherford County is paying attention to the decisions you make regarding the representation of our children. I applaud Mr. Stevens' efforts for the innovative and heroic thinking he put into the fair and equal representation of all of our children, grandchildren, and future generations of Rutherford County. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening and I wish you all a very blessed Thanksgiving with friends and family.
Thank you very much. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Legislation to restore financial sanity. The biggest concern for the taxpayers of Tennessee is our economic crisis. Because of this serious financial situation, our state legislators must soon submit the necessary legislation which will prevent bankruptcy. Because expenditures in the area of education are far greater than expenses in the other operations of local governments, our legislators must cut spending in education. When you examine the statute TCA 49-3-314, it seems that this and related laws cause unnecessary spending in education. There seems to be no attempt to reduce costs. Our solution to the problem: First, examine the requirement in this law. When the budget for education is being considered, this law stipulates that the new education budget for a county should not be less than the budget appropriation for the previous fiscal year. This is the maintenance of local funding effort requirement. This without any regard for the state of the economy of the time. Federal agents working with metro agencies like the National Municipal League are forcing socialistic spending policies upon local governments and encourage the states to pass socialistic laws which force citizens and counties to become financially dependent upon federal funds, thereby converting the nation to socialism. The second step in our solution process is to work with state legislators to draft a bill to repeal the maintenance of effort law for the time being. Remember, 63% of Rutherford County's total budget for 2010, 2011 was appropriated to the schools. Besides this repeal, other ways can be used to save money. The third step in our solution is to investigate how socialistic policies of metro are showing characteristics of being intentionally subversive. For example, during the 2011 legislative session, some of our legislators were warned by metro agents from the National Municipal League not to pass a bill that would restore the citizen's right to trial by jury in city annexation cases. For many years, the goal of metro and the United Nations has been to destroy the citizen's right to self-rule. Financial pressures by metro agents are forcing legislators to pass laws converting our government to a dictatorship. It amounts to this, the almighty dollar. In order for the local governments to receive federal grants, are we citizens expected to surrender our constitutional rights of self-rule to these subversive metro agents? No, a thousand times no. Let's all of us call their bluff and reject their communist-type demands.
All right, thank you, Mr. Todd. Now we have a couple of resolutions of recognition and first, we're going to call on Commissioner Baum to recognize the Segal High School band. And while he's coming up here, we'd like for all of the band members and their directors, et cetera, to come on up here and stand in front of the group. And that way, everyone can see you that's here, plus our television audience.
the 50th Contest of Champions was hosted by Middle Tennessee State University at Floyd Stadium on August 22nd, 2011. This contest is considered by many as Tennessee's state championship for marching bands. 21 of the finest bands in Tennessee, Georgia, Kentucky, and Alabama performed for adjudicators in preliminary competition and eight bands were selected for spots to compete in the finals portion. The Segal High School band received the highest honor and the title of grand champion for their exceptional execution of their 2011 program. This is Segal High School's third straight win as they were also named the grand champion of the 49th Contest of Champions. And whereas, under the music direction of Randy Rhodey and Ed Medford, assisted by Annette Rhodey and Jerry Stein Hilber, Segal's band also finished second overall at the Vanderbilt Marching and Music City Invitationals this year. And whereas, this has been an exciting and successful season and special commendation is due all band members for their hard work which made this championship possible and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their professionalism, dedication, and commitment to excellence. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2011 Segal High School band on all their accomplishments, especially by being named grand champion at the MTSU Contest of Champions and to the band directors and their staff for their dedication and commitment to these young ladies and gentlemen. Resolve this 17th day of November, 2011. I move for approval.
Seconded by several, Commissioner Jordan, I believe. All in favor of this, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No, we know that. We congratulate all of you and give them a round of applause.
On behalf of the students and everybody that's from Segal High School, thank you very much for your gracious invitation for us to be here today. We have a fantastic support organization for our school and a fantastic principal that supports all the students so well, Mr. Ken Nolan. We have the finest booster club in the state of Tennessee and the Segal High School Band Booster Club. We appreciate all of their work and these hard-working students. They put their heart into it and they, they're, they're, they expect to do well because they work hard. And we're, we're very, and I'm very appreciative also of the extra help we have, our percussion and color guard teachers. And these kids are well worth it. Thanks again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we'd like to call on Commissioner Farley to recognize several of our firefighters, many of them that represent us across the county. Commissioner Farley.
At this time, I'd like for Smyrna Fire, Murfreesboro Fire and Rutherford Fire and Rescue firefighters, if you would, come on up. First of all, before I read the resolution, I want everybody to know how proud I am. I'm actually retired firefighter and I'm proud to be one of these guys. So when, when I heard about this, I thought how proud I was and I thought how proud Rutherford County would be to have this many firefighters across the state of Tennessee. To win these honors is very much a privilege to be in Rutherford County. First of all, see some awards up here. And I don't, some of you haven't got them, some of you have. Rutherford County, actually, this hardware that was brought in to Rutherford County, 70% of the state awards are sitting right here in Rutherford County. That's almost three-fourths of the awards across the state. So these guys and this, these citizens in this county ought to be very proud of our guys. What it is, is tough challenges. It's, it's a lot of evolutions a firefighter has to go through and does every day, such as a high-rise chair climb, a hose hoist, forcible entry, entering three-quarter hose advance, and victim rescue. So it's very hard work. They actually do it in their turnout gear and while they're on breathing air. You gotta be in shape to do it. And as they're in shape, okay? Unlike me. With that being said, I want to read this resolution. Resolution of recognition for the firefighters participating in the 2011 Tough Challenge. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize those persons and who conditionally serve others and consistently have a positive impact on the people of Rutherford County. And whereas it has come to the attention of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that some of these firefighters of Rutherford County, Smyrna, and Murfreesboro recently participated in the 8th Annual Tennessee Ultimate Firefighter Tough Challenge on Saturday to September the 24th, 2011, at the Tennessee Fire and Service Code Enforcement Academy over in Bellbuckle, Tennessee. And whereas funds raised by this tough challenge go to help construct and maintain the Tennessee Fallen Firefighter Memorial. And if some of you haven't seen it, it's beautiful. It's honoring those firefighters that have given the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas those participating in the honors they received from Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department are: The paid division, first place with a time of 1 minute and 42 seconds, shift inspector Brian, excuse me, Captain Shift Inspector Brian Low, firefighter Joel Patino, firefighter Jonathan Proby, and driver Chris McCollum. In the professional division, first place with a course record of 1 minute and 30 seconds was shift commander Darrell Alexander. Firefighter Josh Parsons, firefighter Ray Robinson. In fourth place with a time of 1 minute and 44 seconds was firefighter Brett Gammon. Firefighter Jonathan Parsons, firefighter Andy Spitzman, and firefighter Matt Young, which Matt is also one of us county commissioners. Whereas also, he had two individuals compete, Matt Young with 2 minutes and 32 seconds and Brian Low with 2 minutes and 36 seconds. And whereas those participating with honors that they received for the Smyrna Fire and Rescue Department are: The pro team, second place with 1 minute and 37 seconds, Ryan King, Patrick Stewart, Stephen Graves, Jerry Mosley, and Chad Davis. And in the paid team, they were second place with 1 minute and 44 seconds, Matt Sinning, Ryan Kellam, Ryan White, Nick Johns, and Blake Conley. And whereas the paid team, third place, with 1 minute, with a time of 1 minute and 51 seconds was William Wheeler, Eric Meyer, Jeff Williams, David Hamilton, and Daniel Barlow, excuse me, Brownlow, I'm sorry. And whereas with those participating with honors they received with Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department are: Volunteer team, which the volunteers, these guys were number one in the state of Tennessee. Volunteers, they volunteer their time. Volunteer team, first place with 1 minute and 58 seconds, Eric Compton, Kevin Leonard, Duane O'Donnell, and Kevin Defoe, and Marcus Brown. The individual firefighter, for firefighter two, that was in second place with a time of 3 minutes and 30 seconds. And also Rob Odom, he's a, with Volunteer Fire Department, he actually won Volunteer Firefighter of the Year award and that should be an honor as well for, for him to winning that. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that all these fine men be recognized and congratulated for their commitment and dedication to preserving the lives of citizens of Rutherford County, including the cities. And be it further resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners commend these individuals for bringing such recognition back to their respective departments, and wish them the best in all their future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, and I so move.
Second from Commissioner Black, I believe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, gentlemen. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's 6:30 past a little bit, so it's time for our public hearing, and we have one public hearing tonight, and it's a rezoning and conditional use permit request by Larry Davis located at 3534 Ammerville Road. The existing zoning is R-15, the requested zoning is agricultural services, and a requested conditional use permit for a winery, and the size of the site is approximately 37 acres in Mr. Demosey.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. This property is located along Ammerville Road. The applicant's proposing to build a wine production facility, winery, and health spa on the property. The wine production facility would be built first in 2012 to process the 12 acres of grapes which are currently planted on the property. In 2014, the winery, which would contain a tasting room, gift shop, and bistro, and also the health spa, would be added to the property. The projected hours of operation would be from 12:30 PM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. The applicant states that the wine production facility would have a large cellar, may be constructed of cinder blocks. The winery itself would have an appearance of a large residential port, excuse me, house with a large front porch. Facilities would be accessed from either one or two different entrances off of Ammerville Road. Of course, commercial access permits would have to be acquired from TDOT for that. Landscaping and other regulations would have to be constructed in order to, to our standards in order to receive approval. The county comprehensive plan recommends this location be within the Stewart Creek Village Neighborhood Center. The purpose of this center is to accommodate mixed-use opportunities for residential, retail, service, office, and general commercial uses, along with a small-scale, with small-scale industrial-type uses. Now, the center also encourages interaction among the activities within the district to enhance business vitality and to ensure that the appearance and effects of the building are, and use are harmonious with each other. Now, quite frankly, this use was not one that we anticipated when we were looking at the comprehensive plan, but staff feels that if it is designed properly, that it could become an asset to the area. Now, one of the concerns that staff had about this application was really the design of the buildings looking, you know, more appropriate for the area, being built similar to the structures that are in the area. To that end, one of the recommendations from the planning commission was that if this is approved, since it's within Smyrna's urban growth boundary, that it would be appropriate to apply the Smyrna Design Review Standards to this project. This, something we do like about this proposal as well, it leaves a significant portion of the property in a natural or cultivated state, which adds to the amount of open space in the area. Some other concerns that were brought up at the planning commission, the traffic in the area, there was some, there was some comment about some of the improvements a little further up the road, along Ammerville Road and Morton Lane. The town of Smyrna has a project to improve that intersection. Right now, it's actually moving through the Nashville Metropolitan Planning Organization process, which allocates the federal funds and everything needed for that project. It's being added to this current transportation improvement project, which means it's got funds that are assigned to it. It's moving through the amendment process right now, and anticipated that it should go through as best as we can tell, and the schedule for that project would actually be next year, based on the information that we have at this point. And Commissioner Sandlin, I think you had some comments or concerns about that, so I wanted to let you know about that. With that, the planning commission did recommend approval. I believe the applicant is present. Yes, yes, the applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions of Mr. Demosey before we have the public hearing? All right, thank you, Mr. Demosey. Okay, so now it's time for us to open the public hearing and allow anyone that wishes to speak for or against this proposed request to come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. So is there anyone here that wishes to speak for or against this proposal? I don't see anyone wishing to come forward then, so we're going to close the public hearing, and do we have a motion? Commissioner Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with the conditions that we've set forth.
Second, Commissioner Allen. Other discussion? Seeing none, all of you in favor of this then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Demosey. You'd like to make an announcement?
No.
All right.
Kind of a regular occurrence for me. I just wanted to let the commissioners know, as well as anyone in the audience or who may be watching at home, just kind of, just to give you just a quick update on the zoning ordinance update. We do have a new draft and draft zoning map of the, both of the map and of the document itself on our website, which you can get to by www.rutherfordcountytn.gov. There's a link right there on that page. It'll take you to the planning department's homepage where you can get or view copies of both the ordinance and the draft map. And to that end, we're going to be having our first public hearing at the planning commission, December the 12th, Monday night, 6:00 PM, in this room here. It'll be during our regular planning commission meeting, so we'll have a few other business items, I'm sure, but that'll probably be the main one we have on there, so I just wanted to let everybody know that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Demosey. We're ready for elections and confirmations. Commissioner Gooch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. On behalf of the steering committee, we have several items for your consideration this evening. On your desk, you should have a list of the notary applications. I move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner, who was that? Sandlin, excuse me. And Commissioner Phillips, do we wish to speak to that?
I'd like to abstain from the vote, please.
Abstain. Oh, she'd like to abstain from vote. Okay, understand. We have a motion to second. Any other discussion regarding the election of the notaries? All right, all of you in favor of that then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Second, we need to fill two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board. The steering committee recommends Mrs. Frances Mosby and Mr. Bob Asbury, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Other discussion or questions? All in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Third, we need to announce four vacancies on the agricultural board. Finally, we need to have a confirmation of appointment of Steve Harrison to the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Commission to replace Don Alexander, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Black. Any discussion on that? All in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Gooch.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any unfinished business, so we'll start on the reports by the standing committees, and you do have a purchasing committee monthly report. Do we have a motion considered?
Hello.
Okay, Commissioner Cook, motion and second by Commissioner Schaefer. Any questions regarding that report? Although, those of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved. Now we're ready for Commissioner Ely to come forward with a elongated list of items from the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
We will begin with item L-2A, the General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows: from juvenile court, from CTSSEC restricted for administration of justice for court security, $10,095, to part-time personnel, $9,360, social security, $585, and employer Medicare, $150. This is to correct an amendment from last month's agenda, and this was a request from Judge Davenport to provide adequate security for the juvenile court. From fire and rescue miscellaneous, from the miscellaneous gasoline pool, $3,000, to fire and rescue gasoline, $3,000. Agriculture extension, from agri, committed for agricultural natural resources, $26,849. This amount comes from rental income from the facilities, and this has been accumulating over several years. Increased revenues transfers in of $23,271, this is the balance in the capital projects, for increased expenditures, other supplies and materials, $16,120, data processing equipment, $22,000, and other equipment, $12,000. From the Sheriff's Department and jail, increased revenue of contributions and gifts, $24,000, increased expenditures, the Sheriff's Department, other contracted services, $24,000 for canine purchases. And from jail, other contracted services, $5,000, to the Sheriff's Department office equipment, $5,000. Resolve this 17th day of November, 2011. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan again. Discussion on that? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2B, a DEA Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the DEA Special Purpose Fund be amended as follows: Sheriff's Department increased revenue, asset forfeiture, $225,435, to increased expenditures, in-service training, $5,000, uniforms, $20,000, data processing equipment, $10,000, other equipment, $15,000, with an increased assigned for public safety, Resolve this 17th day of November, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Sereno. Any discussion on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2C, a Highway Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Highway Fund be amended as follows: capital outlay, increased revenue, state aid program, $578,000, increased expenditure, state aid projects, $578,000. Resolve this 17th day of November, 2011. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2D, a resolution amending the no-show fee for on-site medical clinics. Whereas at the regular meeting on May 14, 2009, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution implementing a no-show charge for members who fail to attend scheduled care here appointments and/or cancel said appointments, with one missed appointment allowed, and the no-show charge being payroll deducted for active employees and their family members, and billed to retirees. And whereas at the meeting on October 14, 2010, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution to amend the no-show policy effective January 1, 2011, to provide that a $15 no-show fee be imposed to members who fail to attend scheduled appointments and/or cancel said appointments, with the no-show charge to be payroll deducted for active employees and their family members, and billed to retirees beginning with the first missed appointment. And whereas, a review of the policy indicates that missed appointments continue to persist. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that effective January 1, 2012, a $25 no-show charge be imposed to members who fail to attend scheduled on-site clinic appointments and/or cancel said appointments before 7:00 AM the day of the appointment, with the no-show charge to be payroll deducted for active employees and their family members, and billed to retirees beginning with the first missed appointment. Resolve this 17th day of November, 2011. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2E, a resolution authorizing a grant application for Liberty Mutual's Be Fire Smart Fire Safety Pledge Program. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of available grant funds from Liberty Mutual's Be Fire Safe Fire Safety Pledge Program. And whereas Rutherford County desires to submit an application for the said grant in the amount of $10,000, which requires no local matching funds. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for Liberty Mutual's Be Fire Smart Fire Safety Pledge Program in the amount of $10,000, and additionally, that the county mayor be authorized to accept said grant subject to it being awarded. Resolve this 17th day of November, 2011. I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Turner. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2F, a resolution authorizing a grant application for Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of available grant funds from the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. And whereas Rutherford County desires to submit an application for the said grant in the amount of $10,000, which requires no matching funds. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant in the amount of $10,000, and additionally, that the county mayor be authorized to accept said grant subject to it being awarded. Resolve this 17th day of November, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2G, a resolution authorizing a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Health for pet adoption and welfare services. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of a grant award in the amount of $3,000 from the Tennessee Department of Health, requiring no local matching funds for the provision of low-cost sterilization of cats and dogs. And whereas, the grant contract shall be effective for the period commencing on July 1, 2011, and ending June 30, 2012. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Health in the amount of $3,000 for the Rutherford County Pet Adoption and Welfare Services. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows: pet adoption and welfare services to increase revenue, other state grants, $3,000, increased expenditures, veterinarian services, $3,000. Resolve this 17th day of November, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, motion passes.
Item L-2H, a resolution authorizing a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Sheriff's Department. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of a grant award in the amount of $74,985.04 from the Tennessee Department of Transportation, requiring no local matching funds for the provision of implementing a highway safety grant. And whereas, the grant contract shall be effective- And whereas, the grant contract shall be effective for the period commencing on October one, two thousand eleven, ending on September thirty, two thousand twelve. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute the grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation in the amount of seventy-four thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars and four cents from the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows. From the Sheriff's Department, increased revenue, other federal through state, seventy-four thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Increased expenditures, overtime pay, twelve thousand seven hundred thirty-four dollars. Social Security, seven hundred ninety dollars. State retirement, one thousand six hundred nine dollars. Employer Medicare, one hundred eighty-five dollars. And data processing equipment, fifty-nine thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven, I move for approval, Mister Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, motion passes.
Item L two I, a resolution authorizing funding for the renovation and expansion of the jail kitchen. Whereas at the regular meeting on October thirteen, two thousand eleven, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution providing funding in the amount of seventy-eight thousand dollars for design services for the renovation and/or expansion of the kitchen at the Rutherford County Adult Detention Center. And whereas, it is being proposed that the kitchen at the Rutherford County Adult Detention Center be renovated and expanded to add approximately two thousand five hundred new square feet of space, with a complete redesign of the kitchen layout and flow, which will allow for serving one thousand five hundred meals at a time, at a cost of one million two hundred thousand dollars. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding in the amount of one million two hundred thousand dollars be appropriated for the renovation and expansion of the kitchen at the Rutherford County Adult Detention Center, and that the general fund be amended as follows, to provide a transfer to Fund One Seventy-One General Capital Projects Fund. Operating transfers from J W C, restricted for public safety, jail, courthouse, workhouse, using the litigation tax, nine hundred twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. Restricted for capital projects, the development tax, two hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And to transfers out, one million two hundred thousand dollars. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven. Mister Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item L two J, a resolution authorizing funding for the replacement of communications consoles at the Sheriff's Department Dispatch Office. Whereas the ability to provide dispatch services and the ability to communicate with various emergency agencies is vitally important when emergencies occur. And whereas, the dispatch office at the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department needs to be upgraded to meet the current demand for the safety of all Rutherford County citizens. And whereas, it is being proposed to appropriate five hundred ten thousand dollars from the restricted-for-capital account, the development tax, to replace the radio equipment and the platforms in the dispatch office at the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department. Whereas at a meeting on June two, two thousand eleven, the Emergency Communications Board of Directors, a contribution of not to exceed two hundred fifteen thousand dollars was approved to reimburse Rutherford County upon receipt of invoices documenting payment by the county for the radio equipment purchase. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows, to provide a transfer of five hundred ten thousand dollars from the restricted-for-capital account development tax to the General Capital Projects Fund to provide funding to replace the radio equipment and platforms in the dispatch office at the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department. And additionally, that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to accept a contribution of up to two hundred fifteen thousand dollars from the Emergency Communications District upon the county providing copies of invoices documenting payment by the county for said equipment. From restricted-for-capital, five hundred ten thousand dollars to transfers out, five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven. Mister Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Jordan, second. Any discussion? Question, Commissioner Schaefer.
I, two places there. I read, one, not to exceed two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And on down there, it says, up to two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. This costs five hundred and ten thousand. We are getting reimbursed two hundred and fifteen thousand from the Emergency Communications District, correct?
That is correct. Any other questions? Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item L two K, a resolution authorizing funding for brick repair at the Sheriff's Department. Whereas at the regular meeting on June sixteen, two thousand eleven, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution appropriating thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to provide architect services and daily inspection services for the brick veneer repair at the Rutherford County Adult Detention Center. And whereas, the brick veneer repair has been bid and a contract has been awarded to Williams Restoration and Waterproofing for a cost of two hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows, to provide a transfer of two hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars from the restricted-for-public safety account, the litigation tax, to Fund One Seventy-One General Capital Projects Fund, to provide funding for the brick veneer repair at the Rutherford County Adult Detention Centers. Operating transfers from J W C, restricted-for-public safety from the litigation tax, two hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars, to transfer out, two hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandler, second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item L two L, a resolution approving construction budget for Stewart's Creek High School. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners has previously approved resolution authorizing funding for designing, constructing, and equipping the Stewart's Creek High School to be funded in the next bond issue. And whereas, at the regular meeting on October thirteen, two thousand eleven, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution for the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed fifty million seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And whereas, the construction budget for Stewart's Creek High School totals forty-six million three hundred forty-four thousand one hundred and two dollars. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the line-item construction budget for Stewart's Creek High School be approved as follows. Architect, one million three hundred forty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Engineering services, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Construction, thirty-nine million six hundred and six thousand dollars. Furniture, equipment, technology, et cetera, four million one hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Site development, one million dollars, for a total of forty-six million three hundred forty-four thousand one hundred and two dollars. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven. Mister Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Sandler, the second. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item L two M, a resolution approving construction budget for the Eagleville Phase Two Edition. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners has previously approved resolutions authorizing funding for the Eagleville Phase Two Edition to be funded in the next bond issue. And whereas, at the regular meeting on October thirteen, two thousand eleven, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution for the issuance of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed fifty million seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Whereas the construction budget for the Eagleville Phase Two Edition totals three million seven hundred four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the line-item construction budget for the Eagleville Phase Two Edition be approved as follows. Architect, three hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Engineering services, one hundred thousand dollars. Construction, two million nine hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. Furniture, equipment, technology, et cetera, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Site development, fifty thousand dollars, for a total of three million seven hundred four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven, I move for approval.
Second, back to Commissioner Tiffany Phillips. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item L two N, a resolution adopting debt management policies for Rutherford County. Whereas the Tennessee State Funding Board requires that each local government in the state of Tennessee adopt a debt management policy consistent with the Funding Board requirements. And whereas, the governing body has determined that debt management policy tailored to the needs of the Board of County Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, can improve the quality of decisions, identify and disclose parameters relating to the structure and issuance of debt, identify policy goals, and provide a foundation of long-term financial planning, all of which are in the public interest of the county. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County, by the Board of County Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the debt management policy attached heretofore as Exhibit A is hereby approved. Be it further resolved that this resolution and the debt management policy hereby approved shall take effect immediately from and after the adoption of this resolution, the welfare of Rutherford County, Tennessee, requiring it. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven, I move for approval, Mister Chairman.
Second, from Commissioner Turner. Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Farley.
Yes, as the Finance Director, what are, in this policy, what are some major changes? There's none.
It just reduces to writing what we do.
Okay. So it's basically doing what we've been doing, it's just, it's in writing now?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? All of you in favor of this, then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, thank you.
Item L two O, a resolution authorizing grant application for Historical Records Regrand Program for Archives. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of available grant funds from the Tennessee Historical Records Advisory Board Historical Records Regrand Program. And whereas, Rutherford County desires to submit an application for the said grant in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars, which requires no local matching funds. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for the Tennessee Historical Records Advisory Board Historical Records Regrand Program in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars. A copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And additionally, that the county mayor be authorized to accept said grant, subject to it being awarded. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven, I move for approval, Mister Chairman.
Second, from Commissioner Coggan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you again, Commissioner Ely, for a very excellent job of handling all of that business regarding our Budget Committee. Commissioner McAdoo, well, there's no report from the Health and Ed Committee, so Commissioner McAdoo will have a resolution from the Property Management Committee.
A resolution to approve lease agreement with Peachtree Incorporated for Last Casters Convenience Center. Whereas the attached lease agreement by and between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and Peachtree Incorporated for leasing of property currently known as the Last Casters Convenience Center. Copy of said lease agreement being attached heretofore as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein at length verbatim, as if set forth herein, has been approved by the Property Management Committee. And whereas, it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said lease agreement with Peachtree Incorporated for lease of said property. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to approve the lease agreement with Peachtree Incorporated for leasing of said property according to the terms and provisions contained in and, contained in said lease agreement. Be it resolved that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the lease agreement with Peachtree Incorporated. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven, and I so move.
Second, Commissioner Black. Any questions or discussion? All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. There is no report from the Public Safety Committee, and we do have a resolution from the Public Works and Planning Committee. Commissioner Jernigan.
Public Works and Planning Committee has one resolution. It's drainage easements for lots sixty-five and sixty-six of River Oaks. Whereas pursuant to the Private Act, authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements. Requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit One are the easements recommended by the Planning Department. And whereas, the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the public drainage easements as submitted by the Planning Department. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approves as additional public drainage easements, the attached list Exhibit One as submitted by the Planning Department in accordance with Tennessee Code, annotated five four dash nine oh three and five four dash nine oh four. These public drainage easements, in addition to those previously approved, shall be the only public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolved this seventeenth day of November two thousand eleven, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Black. Any questions on this? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Jernigan. Next, the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Commissioner Coggan has a resolution.
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, you have before you a resolution to approve the inter-agency agreement with Murfreesboro Smyrna and Laverne for the enterprise license with Environmental Systems Research Institute for GIS Software. Whereas, attached is an inter-agency agreement. Whereas attached is an inter-agency agreement between Rutherford County, Tennessee and the cities of Murfreesboro, Smyrna and Laverne for an enterprise license with ESRI for GIS software. A copy of the same being attached here to is Exhibit One and incorporated herein at by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said inter-agency agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials be and they hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, Tennessee, the attached inter-agency agreement with the cities of Murfreesboro, Smyrna and Laverne, Tennessee. Resolved this 17th day of November, 2011. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Mr. Jeff Jordan, second. Any questions? All in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Is there any other business that anyone wishes to bring before this body?
I would like to bring a motion to all of us here from the city of Laverne on the redistricting. And we've had good representation and then we've had bad representation in our school system. Now as far as the road board, we don't have any county roads in the city, so that doesn't bother us too much. And my resolution is to move that the redistricting committee reconvene for the purpose of the studying of the county school board and the road boards, their zones, among other things, and then make the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners no later than the regular December 2011 meeting on whether to keep the current zone or modify the zones, provided that if the committee recommends a modification, the committee should also submit at least one proposed map to the county Board of Commissioners for consideration. I so move.
We have a second? Commissioner Young. Yes, just a moment, let Mr. Robertson get that so he can put that language precisely in. Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually thank you, Commissioner Cook, for bringing this up. I plan on voting yes on this for the simple fact that I represent Laverne and I'm their voice and not mine. I mean, I'm not up here to represent my interests, I'm up here to represent the interests of the people that elected me. And the vast majority of the people that contacted me from the Laverne area, all they were asking for is we would just like this to be looked at again. They weren't necessarily asking one way or the other if we can change the map. Sure, some of them would like to change the map and some of them mentioned to me that they they're fine with the way the map is, to be quite honest. But I think what their concern was, at least what was relayed to me, was that they felt like there was just a dismissal of some of the conversation from the Steering Committee meeting. And I'm a man of my word and I told them that if it came up, I would support the motion, at least to reengage in the discussion, and then trust that the redistricting committee comes back with something that's acceptable to them, which internally I would hope would be acceptable to us and eventually acceptable to Rutherford County. And so I encourage you just to at least consider that, that we're not making a motion to go back and change everything. But we certainly are putting our best foot forward to try to represent, at least on my end for District 10, the constituents that elected me to be their voice, and that's why I plan on supporting this motion.
Commissioner Schaefer.
In principle and in concept, I agree with this motion. But I don't like dates that are put in there of December 11th. That's what, three, three and a half weeks away to come up with a solution. I can start naming right now what's come out of the General Assembly that gets rushed through after they look at it some and then they rush it through that is going back and had to be changed. I'm talking things like the tax freeze and we let it go that first year because of something it had in it that was a big, major loophole. I look at the DUI legislation they passed that sounded great, but everything, including the uniforms and the overtime and all, fell onto the county. I also think of the voter ID law that came out with what you have to have for a photo ID. As of right now, I'm 64. When I got my last driver's license, I had the picture on it, was brown hair, so I was going to get a new one, okay? It didn't look like me, well, maybe in the face. But anyhow, I went down and it was in Laverne when they had that one open. Lo and behold, but the picture machine was down that day, so I got a driver's license without a picture on it. And right now, and I've got plenty of photo IDs, but they're not from the state or the federal government. And this is what really gets me. As I was back, I was in the first lottery, I was 38th. I wound up joining the Air Force. I wound up flying in the backseat of an F-4 fighter. I flew 200 combat missions in Southeast Asia. I received the Distinguished Flying Cross. And right now, in this state, I am disenfranchised as a voter. And I voted in every presidential election since Nixon, Humphrey and Wallace. So some of y'all can figure out how old I am, I guess, then. Now, I don't know if I can vote for this the way it is. I like what they're asking, but I think we can do it a better way and get a good answer and a full answer. And I don't know if we can get that in the next three weeks.
All right, thank you. What I'm going to do, and we'll continue the discussion, I'm going to read the motion so you can clearly understand what you have before you. The motion is that the redistricting committee reconvene for the purpose of studying the county's school board zones and road board zones, among other things, and then making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners no later than its regular December 2011 meeting on whether to keep the current zones or modify the zones, provided that if the committee recommends a modification, the committee shall also submit at least one proposed map to the Board of Commissioners for consideration. That's the motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, the other night at steering, and maybe I didn't, I mean, I thought I was in understanding. It was along with the motion that was made tonight on looking at the zones for the school board. I've talked to the school board members, as well as y'all have probably talked to the school board members, and they're happy with what it is. Not only that, not in a general statement of just being happy, they're going to represent the people that they're supposed to represent in their three district representation. All of them. Wherever you put me, whatever you want to do, I'm going to represent my three districts that I'm supposed to represent, no matter what you do. What I heard from the other night, from the Laverne mayor and some others, was something, and unless I misunderstood, and I'm just calling it as I'm seeing, and I tried to do that the other night at steering, and got some folks, I think, riled up, or we shorted somebody off or something, let me tell you, I give all the respect in the world to the county commissioners and elected officials and the mayors and everybody, so I say that right there. I hope I don't come across that way. But what I learned, and it was a big learning process with me being the chairman on the redistricting committee, is that the law took us out of any binaugling or doing anything redistricting wise that was not right. You had to go by the appearance of the redistricting, you had to go by, you couldn't put, you couldn't have an area where it's all female or all white or all male or all black or anything, you couldn't do that by law. And what I heard the other night, and what I'm hearing right now, is that you want us to tweak it to where we're breaking the state law. And we can't do that. Laverne, Murfreesboro, Smyrna, nobody can have their own little section with their own representative. It can't happen. It can't by law. So right now, if Laverne had three people that wanted to get elected and they got elected, they would have three people living in the city of Laverne representing parts of Laverne. Right now, you have three representatives representing Laverne in the school board. You shaking your head, that's a fact. You need to look it up. And so across the board, it's a plan that's worked true for quite a few years. But I don't really know our task, being the chairman of the redistricting committee, as far as what we have to do or what we're charged with. Because talking with the school board representatives and what we've done to be legal, we're already there. So I'm just trying to get a clarification. If you so choose to do this, that's fine, we'll do it. We're not actually, from what I understand tonight, opening up our redistricting process as far as all the 21 districts that have been redistrict, they're done. That's it. The school board zones is what you're wanting to redo. And you tell us what, I mean, this wasn't a one-meeting process, it wasn't a two-meeting process, wasn't a three-meeting, this was five weeks that it took. So, and we've had it on the web, we've had the maps up there, and we talk to everybody, road board, school board, every week about, let us know what the changes are, what you want to see, what do we need to do? Tweak, that was my word, tweaking. We'll tweak it, we'll try to get it right. And that's where we're at. So I'm just confused about what we're charged with. If you so vote to send it back to us, we'll do what you want us to do. We have a pretty sharp committee of 11.
Other questions or discussion? Anyone else wish to speak? We have to come back to the second round. Commissioner Allen.
I just have a quick perspective that I'd like to share, as being someone who served on the redistricting committee. We were very conscientious to follow the law. We were very conscientious about the commission districts. We looked at how it affected the school board and the road board members as it related to the current districts that they represented. We never, at the end of the process, put the school board map back up and looked at it and said, how do we feel about that? Does that look good? Does that make sense? If we'd intended to draw a map, is that what it would have looked like? We didn't do that for school board or road board. That wasn't our challenge. We didn't break the law, we did absolutely everything by the book like we were supposed to do. Would it have been a good idea for us to put that map up there? I think it probably would have been. As somebody who grew up in Laverne, I can tell you forever, the citizens of Laverne feel like the stepchildren to Murfreesboro. I've heard that, maybe not everybody feels that way, not everybody in Eagleville feels that way. Completely unintentionally, we took the two stepchildren and we pushed them out. And so, you know, in the law, it says appearances do matter. That was again, one of the guidelines that we were given as you draw these districts. They didn't say it as it related to school board, they said it as it relates to commission districts. My thinking is, if it's good for the commission district, then why isn't it good for the school board? When they spend, you know, the vast majority of the money that we have in this county, it just seems like it would make sense to me for us to at least step back, look at it. Nobody's asking to make any changes today. But, you know, we were so proud of ourselves, patting ourselves on the back about how quickly we went through the process, I just don't understand, well, we can't take a minute, take a breath, look at this, you know, let's hear from the constituents. They're the ones that we represent. It's great that the school board members are happy. I'm less concerned about them than I am about the people that we're representing. So that's my thinking, that we should vote yes to at least take a moment, reconsider. If we don't get it done by December, I don't think there's anything magic that happens in December. I believe, from my understanding, is we have time to change this. And it doesn't have, there's nothing magic happens in December. So I would rely on, you know, the county attorney to tell us, if there are other deadlines, you know, that relate to this that I'm not aware of, then I'd like for him to tell us that. But, so whether it's December or January or whenever we get this finished, I think it deserves to be looked at.
Schaefer.
I want to follow up on part of what Commissioner Allen said. And the first thing I want to say, I have no problem at all with changing road board and school board zones. I just think it ought to be done properly and looked at, because you got to look at elections that come up. You can't cut into somebody's term in the middle and shorten it. You got to do it when they come up for election. We have, there is no restraints on the county commission as to when they have to change zones for school board or road board. And what I'm saying here is, it can be done in 2012, after it's looked at good, and then the follow-up election or whenever they come, they can be worked out. The road board and the school board zones can be aligned, which they aren't now. I mean, with the same numbers and this type thing. And I don't see why it has to be done by December 11th. To me, I feel, because I was part of this when it came out, I was originally asked to file the motion tonight. And I think we'd be better off with another thing is getting people from around the county, cutting down on elected officials, and forming an ad hoc committee, that that's their sole purpose, is to study the road board and the school board zones and come back with a recommendation, an unbiased recommendation based on their studies. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? We have a motion on the floor. If there's a discussion or questions, we're going to take a vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twelve yes, seven no, one abstained. Motion passes.
Is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner Sandlin.
According to the motion that passed, then we will be meeting and coming back with a recommendation by 11th, correct?
That is the motion. Your charge is to reconvene that redistricting committee, whether it's one time or 30 times times between now and the eleventh of December, but you have to have your recommendation, if there is one made. If you're going to make a change, you even have to have the change prepared and presented to the Board of Commissioners.
We'll be in touch with them and try to meet next week, so we'll get on it quick.
Any other business? Commissioner Cook.
The election committee will be sending out voter cards, is what, districts and so forth. That's one of the things that we need to think about, too. I think it's done in January.
Let me say this, in all probability, even though you get this recommendation, if they were to make one, you won't have the time to actually change these zones, because we've got terms that can't be abridged. There are some technical difficulties here that will have to be addressed before we actually make these changes. And as has already been noted, the Board of Commissioners can do this at any point that you so choose. It doesn't have to be done before January the first. So, there we are. Anything else, Mister Cook?
I think that's entirely correct. These county commission districts, of course, are some urgency to get them in by state law, but the private acts that you have presently as to both the road board and the school board grant to the county commission the authority to reconsider, redraft the school board and the road board zones, respecting, of course, incumbency and that sort of thing. But you still have that opportunity at a later date if you want to.
Any other business you wish to bring before this body? Commissioner Jeff Phillips.
I don't know what that was, but I'm sure glad I wasn't grabbing a hold of it when that happened. The motion that just passed, the way I understand it, a result of that could be from that committee, that we're not going to do anything right now, but we will look at it over the next twelve months. Is that correct? So it does give that committee the flexibility to bring back that recommendation by December the twelfth. Is that correct?
Well, the motion says that they will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners no later than its regular December two thousand and eleven meeting on whether to keep the current zones or modify the zones. So they'll have to make that decision first.
Okay.
So if they do say, we don't make any recommendation to modify the zones, that's the end of it. But if they do say, yes, we recommend a change, then they are supposed to submit their first proposed recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. You may or may not have to adopt it, then, you could continue that discussion for as long as it takes to get that in satisfactory form. Commissioner Schaefer.
So, if it comes back from the redistricting committee with a negative recommendation on doing it, the same motion can be brought up again in January at this commission meeting, right?
Can always bring any motion you so choose.
A different motion, maybe a better motion, or something that says it a little better. Thank you.
Always have that privilege. Any other discussion? Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. A couple of months ago, I really appreciated everybody in this room, but tonight, perhaps a little more. I wanted to give you some happy things about some of our folks that you may or may not be aware of. At the Embassy Hotel on November twenty-eighth, the TWSS double A will present some outstanding awards, Mr. Football Awards, and Itavious Mathews of Blackman is up for that, and another young man, Cornelius Elder, who played at Central Middle School, and is an outstanding player, is up for it as well in another division. Also, we had a young coach who was at Christiana Middle and is now at Riverdale High School, Holly White, who received one of the top ten Female Coaches in the State Award for her district. And that award has already been given to her, it's over four hundred schools, and that was awarded just a few days ago. That's the TWSS double A AF Bridges Awards Program. And I'm very proud of Coach White, who I'm told by her principal is an outstanding teacher and coach. And also, ironically, I think this got perhaps lost in the shuffle, and I wanted to mention it, and I was going to do it at Health and Ed, but it seems so appropriate perhaps tonight. Rutherford County School Board member Wayne Blair was selected for the National School Board Association's Distinguished Service Award, an award he's already, has already received. Only two school board members from Tennessee received the award this year, they can go up to ten, they chose to honor Mr. Blair. It's given to those who made a significant contribution to the advancement of education, the leadership at a local level and beyond. According to the organization, Blair previously won the award in two thousand and eight, this is his second award in the last three years. And Mr. Wayne Blair, certainly, he was a friend of many people in this room, so certainly be commended. I appreciate the time, I appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, good report. Any other business? Commissioner Coggan.
Just two things, well, just one thing, really. I don't represent the people of Kitchell, but I think Commissioner P. would want everybody to know there's a ham breakfast Saturday at six o'clock.
Thank you. I'm sure he will thank you for that. Any other business? If there is none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.